All right, it's six thirty. I'll bring the meeting to order. First up, modifications or changes to tonight's agenda? Does anybody have anything to add or change? Hearing none, move on to public comment. Anybody here from the public that wishes to speak tonight? All right, hearing no comment, I'll move on to 2022 preliminary budget.
Thank you, Sam. So we've got two different departments that will be reviewing tonight as part of their 2022 preliminary budget. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees specifically just to go over these department budget items specifically. So first, we're going to go through the electric department. And then we'll go through the Public Works Department and any other remaining items in the general fund that the board they want to discuss. We've got two of our department heads here from the GBS, they call Dave Westcomb, one of the line technicians for the electric department, and Kenny Plant, one for the Public Works Department. We're here to help answer any questions and they may have some comments for you as well about their respective preliminary budgets that you guys will be reviewing tonight. So why don't we get into the electric department then? Hopefully you guys have had a little bit of time to at least thumb through this preliminary budget and get a little bit familiar with the various parts of each department in here. The electric department is shown with some pretty significant decisions that will need to be made by the Board of Trustees. We're showing currently in this draft a $470,645 deficit. The deficit from a cash perspective is a little smaller at $349,291, but obviously still a significant deficit. The bulk of this is coming from power supply related costs. The total of which from purchase power, the McNeil project, which we are a core of, Project 10, which we are also a co- and transmission charges comes to $198,240. Yeah, I'm just going through the manager's analysis. In addition to that, there is an increase in the RES program. It's a state mandated program of $23,950 and an increase in VEPSA administration fees of $32,594. Unfortunately, we have little or no control over these specific budget line items. So you know, you add all of these up together and you're well over $2,000 of the $349,000 that, you know, decision-making ability over there. They're mandated or told to us by other entities like ISO New England, for example, that these are what our charges are going to be. So it doesn't really give us a whole lot of wiggle room when you go through all of those specific line items. In addition, under the capital budgets section of the budget, you will see $21,600 that we have in here for the study to bury utility lines on Main Street. Another item that I want to bring up with the board is the digger truck with the electric department. You guys, I think you're aware that we're still concerned about the condition of the electric department's digger truck. It is passing inspection now. It is usable and we have been using it and that's good. You guys know that it's a very old piece of equipment. It was intended to really only be used for maybe a couple of years until when we purchased it, which was last year. In order to get us through a period where we could think about, you know, what we wanted to do and properly budget for the purchase of another digger truck down the road. And it's the recommendation of the electric department staff that we think you should consider doing that. So we have in here $230,000 shown within the budget for the purchase of a new digger truck. Oh, that there's a two-year waiting period to get these types of equipment now. And so although the vote would take place in 2022, chances are we wouldn't really get the equipment until sometime in 2024. So assuming, you know, it was built to specs and everything, you know, was correct and we accepted delivery on it, the payments on the vehicle would not begin until sometime in 2024. But in order to, you know, to get that order moving, you get the vehicle bill because that's how they're doing it now. They're building them after you order them. So even make the order though, we've got to, you know, have that discussion with the board if you need to approve moving forward with the purchase of the vehicle to be given with the order. So that is another significant issue that we want to talk about as part of the electric department preliminary budget. As of now, this is how the electric department's budget's looking. We will continue to, you know, keep scanning things, keep asking questions, but we can't find any errors or duplications or there are not other significant reductions that we could make in the budget somehow. You know, we may be very close to these projected figures and it's quite possible that we'll just maybe we can't find a rate increase in 2022 if this doesn't need be the case. So with that, Dave, I'll turn it over. You, if there are any comments or questions, anything that you want to bring up at this time as department head?
Steve, you've already talked about the bigger truck. That is a ways out, so we're going to look at who in one, you know, it might be time to really start looking at that. I have one, and I would just kind of throw into this that budgetary line, you guys have discussed, I guess, in meetings here, looking into putting underground of Main Street.
Yeah, there's a, there's a steady budget in that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got 21,600. That would definitely come out of like the department revenues. Yeah, that is a big share of Main Street here. This is just my opinion. That's one of the newest, most robust pieces of circuitry we have in the village. We have, in my opinion, places that money can be spent a little better because we have older infrastructure in other places. But I guess that's, you know, that's a decision that is not in my heart.
I think it's always more for aesthetics and less for upgrades.
I understand that.
Right, right. I get that, Dave. I understand what you're saying, that that infrastructure is not really that old. And from your perspective as a lineman, it'd seem a shame maybe to take that all down.
There is some old, but jolly store up. That is in need of its own 2400 bolt stuff. That certainly, in my opinion, is something that we've been looking at renewing anyway.
But it wouldn't make any sense to leave some up on some there.
Right, especially in the downtown area.
Yeah, it's not, it's not. I'm sure you understand.
I understand. I'm just.
It's not a consideration.
A lot of years.
Yeah. I think we get that and it's not a consideration of the performance of the infrastructure. It's a consideration of the aesthetics of the downtown area and the board's desire to try to make the downtown look as nice as it possibly can for people in the community.
And hopefully to attract more people to the community.
So as far as the bucket check goes, it definitely sounds like it's not working out as well as we had hoped. Oh yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it's working. It's, we're using it and it's all. It's 94 and the boom on it. It's really, we're going to continue using it.
Yep. Have we looked into finding any used ones that aren't?
We've been, Al and I have been watching the used stuff almost daily. We looked at one today that doesn't really fit, but it could. It was $112,000, it's 2013. We're thinking of calling on it tomorrow and see if it's even still available. Everything that's even been on there, it has gone almost daily.
Right.
There's almost nothing out there. So in, nothing that's reasonably, you know, new, you know, not, there's a lot of 40-year-old stuff.
So we ran into this issue with the street sweeper where we didn't have any money budgeted. And when we did find a good used one, you know, it was two weeks before we called a meeting together to get money, so. Would it be smart to put aside like 50,000 bucks, 40,000, something like that, at least for a hefty down payment on something like that? If one comes up used?
If that's the route you want to go, I didn't, we put it in there just to see if there's approval to start a process of new, but if you want to put entirely up you guys, how you want to go.
Yeah, it's, once you make the order, I think you're committed to it. You're not going to be able to back out.
Right, right.
So there's.
I guess we need to watch whether you want us to look strictly for used stuff or if you want to.
Well, I'm just wondering because your lead time could also be cut down substantially. If you do find a used one and you had money budgeted, you could have one in a couple of months. Whereas, you know, if you order a new one and our digger truck goes down, it's two months out and twice the price. I don't, I don't know exactly where, how you want to do it. If there is a time crunch for the current digger truck to get that out of service or?
I mean, there's no knowing how long that thing's going to, for, you know, it starts a kidney again or something.
How, how often does that truck get used?
It depends. Like in the last couple of weeks, not very much. Earlier in the summer, we were using it two, three times a week. And.
Yeah, it's one of those things that moves once a month.
Yeah, it's not the most used truck in every, by long term. The buckets are used a lot more than the but it's one of those things that if we have, you know, a storm disaster where three or four walls get broke off or something, you got to have one then. It's not, and I'm not trying to push anybody.
When you need it, you have that.
What would you rather have? A two-year lead on a brand-new one or maybe next year?
If we could find something used that really fits the bill, I don't have any problem with it. I don't, if it's really good shape and used, I don't have a problem with it. As long as we can find something that fits the bill. This one didn't quite do it, but it's workable.
And so that, that also gets another question of if we're going to keep the one that we have now for a spare? Would that be a good idea? Doesn't really owe us much.
Doesn't owe us any money.
No, exactly.
Doesn't owe us any money.
And what are we going to do? Put it on the corner for auction and get $1,500 high bid on it? You know what I mean?
Who else is going to use that?
Exactly. Yeah, so we have what, 10,000? Well, more than that. Oh, we've got 18,000.
Now, right.
Which is, you know, peanuts compared to a new one or even a piece of used one. And if we had that peace of mind of having a spare, you know, digger truck or even two at a time, you get a storm and four bolts snapped off, you have to lose two poles at a time, you know, when we were.
If I call it more on it's not exactly what we need, but it does have most of the features we need. And it's, it's four-wheel drive, like we get off the road a lot, we use. It doesn't have the capstan and winch on the front, which is kind of critical for ours because that's what we use for pulling in new conductors. So if we don't have a pulling.
That could be put on it.
That can certainly be put on. Yep. Last time when we were doing quotes, that kind of stuff was like 12, 14,000 out of action. So it's a little more than 112, but we started adding stuff to it. But it looked like a reasonably decent truck without actually standing on it, seeing what it is. I mean, it's down in Lower New Hampshire.
What brand truck?
It's a Terrac's Digger on a freight line in Jessi. Looks like a really decent truck. Who knew? You know, that may be gone. Every time we've looked at one, it's gone like the day after.
How often do they come up?
This is the first one we found in the type of truck we need. Probably almost two months.
Okay, it's close, but it's not like every six months or a year.
No, it's, we've seen a couple. We had one right after the other one was passed. We found one, but that actually disappeared real quick too. There've been a couple that we've seen that were supposed to be exactly what we.
So I guess, I guess my question is, again, what would you rather have? Because we could budget money to buy something next year.
I mean, if we budget money, then we know we definitely are getting something. If we keep looking for used, how long would that be before, you know, maybe we don't, maybe we do find something and we don't?
But if you know that money's been budgeted and you find something, you can jump on it immediately.
Yeah.
And maybe before the next guy does.
Yep.
I feel like too, if we spend 100, say 130,000 on a truck that frees up 100,000 upgrades following years and whatever you need to upgrade.
Kind of like you couldn't take money out of.
No, no, I'm saying that, that would leave it open, you know. You're not, you haven't already spent a quarter million dollars. You spend 130,000, say, I'll put 100,000 back into the system next year. Doesn't hurt.
And I will get different opinions in the department. Me, as long as it's a really decent truck, I don't care. As long as it's a really decent truck.
So I guess my other question is if we do go that route to put, let's just say 50,000 and that at least should preserve a truck if we were interested. At that point.
Works on used trucks. If we have payments or we have.
Well, it would depend, I think, on the, you know, the cost of the vehicle, whether if you still got into significant money, I think you would still want to finance. You wouldn't want to pay cash for, you know, $100,000 or more, you know, close to that.
So that's my question. If we're financed to be able to budget that amount or do we just need to budget like as a down payment?
And you could, you could do it that way if that's the way that the board would prefer to go, to look at a good used as opposed to new. The budget in this year's budget, just, you know, maybe a grand or something, whatever, 50 grand is a good down payment, realizing that we'd still have, we, staff would still have to come back to you for approval on rest of whatever cost and finance the rest of that purchase.
Whatever, if you have mind, anytime one of these used ones come up, if you guys don't meet for over two weeks and somebody has to get the approval, you know.
How long do we have before we can help?
Yeah, well, we can hold a special meeting as, you know, as long as all the pieces of it come together. Everybody can, or at least a majority of the board can meet on that day you're trying to do it. But technically, on statute, you only need to warn the 24 hour special meeting. But the key though is making sure you get all enough board members to be able to come there as well. So sometimes it won't work out that you can call one that quickly. It may not be for three days. Just depends on.
I feel like we have a time advantage now with Zoom thing because.
You can finish the board on that one.
Yeah.
You know, I just, listening, I have a little reservations on holding out for used. I'm normally very much in favor of that, but just the market is not, um, is not super good for people looking for used vehicles. So that would definitely be one of my concerns is, um, you're paying over-market value for a lot of things and, you know, like they were just saying that they're hard to get. They're hard to find. Just, I'm not.
Well, it's a special item and, and I think that it might, that the market might not be as representative in this particular kind of item that we're looking for as it is in the used car market. It's a totally different item.
It is, but there's still like factory issues and other stuff that's kind of making things challenging.
Factory issues?
Well, just like factory is not in operation and I don't know. I just, I think that it's just a, a big picture concern. I don't know. Like I said, I'm normally in favor of uh, used. I'm just, I definitely have a little bit of concern about just putting all of our ducks in that basket.
Also, Dave, if you were to keep that other truck you mentioned, don't you have to certify that?
Yes, in order to be, in order to be operated, that has expenses every year.
That would be a
that one's probably going to get tougher and tougher to pass the OSHA requirements every probably.
Is it an annual inspection, annual inspection?
Maybe load testing, electric testing.
So there's kind of two schools of thoughts on that and believe me, we internally, amongst staff, had the same types of discussion too about, you know, do we try and go new? Do we, you know, hold out and see if we can find something that's good news? And at the end of our discussion, we decided to, at least for the budget, to suggest that the board consider getting a new one. Given that it's going to take two years, you know, before we receive it and then have to start making payments on it. But, you know, I, my personal feeling is a lot with Dave. If you can find a good used one, I think it's a good option. It's just, it leaves a question mark at the end of that because you don't, you don't know how long that might take or even if you're going to be able to find a good used one and make it work within the next, you know, six, seven months, whatever.
I have a question of Sam, only because of what you do. This particular kind of truck that we're looking for. And my guessing that it's probably overbuilt a little bit more than your typical, I'm going to use the word pickup truck as an example, but then it's, you know, they're, they're much more heavy-duty, sturdier, better built most of the time?
Yeah, but there's, there's different tiers of that. Once you get into big truck stuff, you can get like, it's not the same as Freightliner, small delivery box truck. There's, you know, there's bad, there's bad batches of every something. The 2013 Freightliner doesn't sound bad. If it was a 2010 National.
All right, we will.
Yeah. But now, okay, well, here's another idea. What if you call your guy tomorrow? We meet every week. He says, you know, it's got this, this, this and this. You head down, check it out. It's everything that you need. We'll be meeting next Tuesday.
90%.
Right, or 90%.
And if we can get what else?
It's in good shape. Like, there's a possibility that we could, you know, purchase that now.
There's a very rare, real possibility if it hasn't.
You want to go down that avenue? And we'll just keep the budget the same?
Certainly check. You want to keep this in there the same as we've got it?
We'll just, yeah. Leave this for now. Call him tomorrow and then if, you know, everything sounds good, I don't know if you want to go down and check it out or just have him send any more specs over.
We'll have to either check it out or have to see if he would give it to us for a year or two for an industry to see.
You want to know what you're getting.
That probably is the least likely thing to do.
That was tool around New Hampshire.
Just because it's used in the, it costs a lot of money to have a truck, a truck somewhere for a couple of days. And probably they'd have us go down and try it.
Yeah, either way, would that be something that you'd be interested in doing?
And that's not a bad idea at all. I mean, you don't have to make a decision about this tonight. We're going to have, you know, a number of other budget meetings. And if you want, we can just, you know, find anything. It'll come down to the last meeting, you know, in January and then you guys can make a decision then about what you want to do. If we haven't got the lead on a good used one, you know, by the time.
This is the least place to start.
Yeah, yeah. So that sound like what the board wants to do, just leave it as is for right now. And Dave and Al will keep checking in at used facilities. See what they can come up with for a good option on a used digger and, you know, if we don't find something by the, you know, the end of the last meeting in January, we'll let you guys know when we're at and then, yeah, right, then we'll have to make decisions by then.
Yeah, we have a few more questions. Okay, okay. The only other question that I had. So the maintenance of lines, mutual aid item, is that just a $10,000 a year? And either we.
That's when Swan comes up in the system by the time and.
It's just budgeted every year, sent out. So they see like last year, we only used 644.
Yeah, I swan every. Yeah, I think we still want, Swan gave us assistance.
We do want it and it's more.
Yeah, Swan gave us some assistance about two years ago from, right, on some major upgrades that we did on a couple of our circuit lines. And the deal was that our boards agreed to was they were going to help us on those projects at no charge. And they had a project down in Swan.
Standing.
That's right, it's still.
Yeah, they're waiting for arrangements to get their poll.
Right. And so we're, we're still kind of waiting on that. And that's why last year we didn't go spend very much of that. Okay, but we're still, we're expecting, at least last I heard, you, you got a, a number of updates.
They have no, they're still fighting over reasons.
Oh, so it may not even happen.
It may not happen this coming year.
But he didn't say that it isn't.
Oh, it's not, not.
Really, just don't know.
Maybe, okay. It's just a matter of getting.
So it's possible, it's possible it could still happen.
The last I talked to, he didn't think it was happening this year coming up. Engineering's still going into that.
Another question I had is probably more geared towards accounting, but there doesn't seem to be any depreciation between 21 forecast and 22 both. I would imagine nothing's appreciated. That's on page four or.
Well, we have, while we have under depreciation, we've got, we had 221. Yeah, in 2021, we budgeted 273,354. And two, we're proposing 270,853.
27853, oh, yeah, actually.
Budget is forecast and proposed for all of that dollars.
Right, and there's a note on the side that Abby had put in there saying this was estimated from 2021's depreciation. She's still waiting on a schedule from KBS, which is our auditing firm.
Well, it hasn't either.
I did.
Oh, 27853.
It's up above. It's the, the other 27853. Where's this KBS schedule?
Right here.
Yeah, both three lined up.
Right here. All right, all right. So we're still waiting on that.
Yeah, she, she's contacted KBS. She wanted to get, you know, a good, accurate number in there. But they didn't get back to us, you know, in time to get the budget back out to you guys. So she's still waiting on a solid number from KBS. She put the 27853 in there, sort of a placeholder, because that's what we forecasted for a final in 2021.
All right, how is truck 105? Are you still playing the golf? I'm not. Alright, um, how's truck one oh five? Are you still playing the Gossam I can't mention?
Uh, no, it's been actually working good since the last time they repaired it. I think they finally fixed the issue and blamed it on us. Right from day one, it has not worked right and. They finally fixed, they said the flywheel was shattered on it, the clutch was worn down, paper thin on it, uh. I think they finally fixed that whole hydraulic system on it and it's ever since it's been working fine since its last time.
That's good, good. What about the body on that, anything?
When, when.
We're beginning to show it's seven years old. We're gonna see a little bit of rust here in there, but it's not.
I think a little paint wouldn't make it, we just put some money into the boom on that, just got a hydraulic, had hoses, uh, that were all. Holding out on it. So that's set for a minute and it's set for, yeah, for, should be for a little while, hopefully.
Hey, I guess those are my only questions.
I have a question that I probably should have the answer to, but I don't, because I'm too new. So on three of four, there is an expenditure of garage rent. Thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. I just wondered what garage we rent.
Right, so, um, that's not a, a new expense. It's something that's been in. Your budget for a long, long time.
Well, this is my first time reading.
Right, I, I understood. Um, so what that is, is that, um. The electric department has more equipment. Than it has storage capacity for at its own facilities.
Okay.
So it rents some space from the public works. Garage up on Dickinson Avenue to store some of its equipment. And then pays rent into the public works department, so the general fund. To compensate the department for space that it is using in a different department.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll, you'll find that a lot. It's just inter environmental accounting, because like, they're much front pitch for water and stuff.
Washes. Just swabs.
Yeah, basically. Oh, actually, um, is there, were we looking into a smart metering? Thing? A scoping study, when we have money set aside for that?
Um, smart metering is, uh, still on the table. Um, you guys never made a decision about what direction you wanted to go with that and my. My understanding, um, when we last spoke about it with Ken Nolan. Remember came up and talked with you guys maybe two months or so ago. Um, you guys said you wanted some time to think about it, which is certainly understandable. You probably wanted Ken to come up again and. Have another discussion with you guys, um. And that was kind of how we left it, so we didn't put anything in the budget to actually do it. I'm not sure. Yeah, they, well, they provided an estimate.
Right.
For each of the members and of course it was different for each member, uh, but you did see that. I don't have that. Yeah, I think the, it included the water meters in ours because we have water department. Um. But you could break it down separately if you only wanted to do electric and no water, but we were thinking, if you're gonna do it, let's do both. Uh, um.
There hasn't been an update from the budget side of that. As far as I'm. They'll, they'll read this meter on the house, but as well as over the line, they'll see if there's any drop or any. You know, shorts or anything like that, so you can dispatch technician directly to where they can tell you, um, power outage. All infrastructure moves on.
I mean, more like you spend seven hundred K on it, how do we recoup that money? Um. Is that something, is that like a, a cost you pass on through there? Or is that something that?
Well, you, over time, you would see a, a savings, because you wouldn't have somebody going around reading meters physically. They wouldn't have a, a pickup presumably.
Um.
I feel like you're still.
Yeah, I'm sure that would disappear though. You're still gonna need a person, there's lots of other things that go along with it.
You need a reader first.
We only had one. It's not like for C D P S that used to have, you know, seventy meter person. They cut down on their stuff significantly. But we're probably still gonna have one million pickup expense. Just saying that's probably still a reality.
Okay.
Then, uh, I guess that's a, a technical question for you. Where would we see savings by doing smart metering?
No, I'm probably not the right guy.
I guess I'm asking like, we have to dish out three quarters of a million dollars. Must be we can get that one back sometime.
Yeah, I don't have the materials. I didn't realize this was, uh, gonna come up as a topic tonight, so I don't have materials in front of me. But, um, Vepsa did provide a, a budget schedule. With a cost analysis, cost benefit analysis for Inis Big Falls that we talked about when Ken Nolan came up. Um, there are some efficiencies that you would find. Uh, but they wouldn't be in the form of eliminating a position. They're probably more like, um. Uh, you could turn a person's power back on without having to, you know, actually physically drive to location. From them off and on, you could, you could do it electronically. Um. Customers would find efficiencies in that they would be to, you know, to see more accurately. How much power they were using at, you know, certain times of the day and. In theory, at least, could decide for themselves. Exactly, I mean.
One out of seven hundred and fifty.
Right, I mean, you, you can't really say for sure that that's gonna be an efficiency, because it depends on. The customer and whether they wanna take advantage of that tool or not. And, you know, okay, so power is cheaper at two o'clock in the morning. Are they gonna wait to do their laundry at two o'clock in the morning? You know, run the washer and dryer at that time or. Right, those are the kinds of decisions the customer will have to make, but they'll have. Information available to them at least to at least think about those kinds of options. And those kinds of effi- efficiencies if they want to try and take advantage of. Um. Yeah, so off the top of my head, those were the kinds of things that we talked about with Ken Nolan. And I believe, um, Vepsa put together a payback. Of five years, they were estimating we would have the. Um, the new equipment paid back and then after that, we should begin. Um, seeing more revenue into the departments, uh, respectively, because it's two departments, electric and water. Um, after that time period. Off the top of my head, what I recall about that discussion.
Recently, correct. So if we wanted to add something to that in the budget, we'd have to.
Well. Yeah, I mean, that's not something that's gonna be cheap. I mean, that was in the seven hundred thousand dollar range.
So I'd have to go into a public vote.
Well, I think before you made your decision, what you had said to me. When Ken was out before was you wanted, you thought you wanted to hear more discussion with him.
I think just that, you know, the, the quick synopsis that we got that night is probably not enough to make an accurate decision.
And that.
It's a lot of money.
That then you would maybe wanna think about it after that, which is not unusual, um, to my knowledge. I don't think. Maybe there's one or two, but I know the vast majority of members of Vepsa have not made a decision. About whether they're gonna move forward with the smart metering. Some of them actually even haven't had that presentation yet that Ken Nolan came back to you guys. Um, so you're even a little bit ahead of the curve compared to some of the members of Vepsa on that right now. But, um, I guess, you know, based on what you said to me last time, I would at least have Ken come out and talk to you one more time. You can mull it over in your heads and see whether it's something you really wanna do and then discuss, you know, how the financing on that is gonna go. And it could be, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, I think Vepsa. Has, um, said that they could make, once they get all the answers from the members. They could maybe actually roll all of that into financing through Vepsa. And that, that, so Vepsa would actually be the financer to its members, and you'd be paying back Vepsa. Over that time period and that could make it a lot easier for members in terms of, you know, how quickly they could get this done. Some people just maybe in billions of dollars for them to, you know, the sum of large investors. So, um, you know, for them, that's a, that's a lot, it's a lot of money for us too, that, you know, even.
Yeah, it's not jumping.
For the amount we're looking at too, yeah, it's not, it's not a small amount of money. It's a serious investment. So, you know, you definitely wanna make sure that. Confident in your decision and how you're gonna move forward with that. And if that's like you win some efficiencies. And how you do that financing all the better. But you guys, so am I hearing you would like to have Ken Nolan come back out? And talk with you guys again about this, or are you guys close to ready to that? I can talk to him and see, we can line up a date, you know, in the next month or so if you want.
I'd like to hear what he has to say again before I feel confident in making any kind of decision.
Okay, I'll make another that, it can, uh. Contact and ask him if he can throw out a few dates that might work with your board meetings.
I think as a board, we seem to be trying to be fairly flexible.
Alright, has anybody got any other questions on? And move on to Joe? That David, welcome to stay if you want, though.
I have another appointment.
So that brings us into general fund. We've got a candy plant here from the public works department. They've sent you guys an email. Hopefully you guys had, uh, seen that earlier today, letting you know that, uh, here again. And we pulled out with some medical issues today. That's why we're not, not here tonight. So, um, the general fund right now is showing an increase of twelve point seven nine percent. Or a point two nine cents on the tax rate from twenty twenty-one. Although it appears at this time that we may end the year for twenty twenty-one. And this is under budget. Recall that we did budget for a significant deficit for the year for twenty twenty-one. So, um, although this would typically be seen as good news, and it, and it is still good news. We're not actually gonna be carrying any funds over from twenty-one to twenty-two because we budgeted for a deficit. This will, however, decrease the deficit that we show for twenty twenty-one, the amount of money, uh. That we spent and so we'll actually be able to. Save some of the reserve funds in the general fund that we thought we would have to use in twenty twenty-one. Did, did I explain that well? Does that make sense to you guys? A little confusing. I think I got it. Yeah, so because we budgeted for a deficit, we had planned on using some of the reserve funds. In the general fund to offset that deficit. But we're, it appears we're, we're actually gonna come up under in expenses for twenty twenty-one. So if you've been looking at your. Uh, monthly financial statements, you may have noticed that, that it looks like we're actually under in expenses and that's correct. And that's a good thing, but we're, it doesn't mean that we're gonna carry any funds over from twenty twenty-one into twenty twenty-two. Because we budgeted for a deficit. And so what that, what's gonna end up happening is just that we're not gonna have to. Uh, take as much money out of the reserve fund as we thought we would. And that's still a good. Um. So, as I said, that will leave a little bit more money in the general fund reserve balance, more than we were anticipating. Uh, going into twenty twenty-two. So drivers for the increase. Are the twenty twenty-one road paving projects hitting the fund in the new year in twenty twenty-one. Several sidewalk improvement projects requested be shown in the preliminary budget. Totaling seventy-nine thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. Replacement of two welcome signs. This is the welcome signs that, uh, David had come to talk with you guys about. Um. And then additional electronic speed limit signs. The capital sidewalk improvements have been shown as being financed for ten years at two percent. So that's not carved in stone, if you wanna see something different on that, but. Staff thought that that might be, you know, a good term and probably something close to. Um, an A P R that you might see if we finance that through a local commercial bank here. I just wanted to disclose that too, so, you know, we did, we did find, plan on financing that. We're gonna plan. Finance those sidewalk improvement projects over ten years at two percent. Um, these items count for the bulk of, uh, the increases in the general fund. But, you know, I do wanna point out to you guys. The continuing trend in the general fund that we've seen over the past two years. That being the continued financing of transportation projects. Over ex- extended periods of time for several consecutive years now, and that's starting to build up. We've spent. A bit of time over the last two budgeting sessions of the last two years talking about that. And you may recall, um, our former finance director, Matt Minor. Um, gave you guys quite a few spreadsheets last budgeting season about this and. What the expected increases were going to be in the general fund. Over the next seven to ten years or so, based on, you know. What we were looking at now, what we currently knew was gonna be hitting the general fund over that time period and. Um, so, you know, things are on trend, I would say for that, uh, when we were going through those spreadsheets last year. We were looking at around the four to four point five percent increase in the general fund, looking out over the next. Five to seven years, and that's if we, you know, took on no additional capital improvement projects, so. Everything you do on top of that is only gonna add to that increase. So I just wanna, you know, point that out to you guys. That, and, and remind those of you that were here, um, during the last couple of budgeting processes. You know, that, that's what you're seeing now, that's, you know, that's part of what's been happening is we. We continue to take on a lot of transportation projects. We're financing them and we're financing them over a long periods of time. So, and, and there's this lag, you know, administratively and in the construction season. As to when those projects hit the tax rate, because usually. You know, you're, by the time you get through the administrative ends of those and then the construction of them. You're through pretty much the fiscal year, so you're not really seeing impact of those projects until the following year. Um. So you'll know the increases in bond payments from last year's road projects. It's also, also worth pointing out. That this draft budget shows only six months of payments on the proposed sidewalk improvements forms. So only half the impact, um, to the tax rate for twenty twenty-two. And again, you won't see the full impact of these proposed sidewalk improvement projects until twenty twenty-three. So I just wanna point that out to you guys, the same type of issue. Um, I just wanna say, you know, the board should keep this in mind when considering. Capital projects for the public works department and general fund. That, um, you, you've gotta keep in mind that you're not gonna see the full, full turn. Of those notes usually until the next fiscal year. So, um, we are also, again, as has been discussed the last couple of years. Hanging on using a part of the reserve funds. And in the preliminary budget that you see for. And in the preliminary budget that you see for twenty twenty two in here, uh, the, uh, amount that we are showing being used from the general fund reserve is twelve thousand dollars to offset, uh, the impact of the tax rate. So if you weren't doing that, it would be even higher than the twelve percent you're seeing here. But we're planning in here and using um, twelve thousand dollars out of the general fund reserve to offset costs in the twenty twenty two.
At the twelve thousand five eighty six?
Um, it should be, yeah, it should be listed in here.
Okay, so I, I have a question. It says right here that we're making an adjustment of twenty five thousand dollars from the sidewalk reserve. But we're also appropriating twenty five thousand to sidewalks. Is that, is that the same transaction just listed twice? Or are we putting fifty grand in the sidewalks?
You're looking on page four.
There's an appropriations first line is sidewalk. Um, and there's twenty five going to the sidewalk fund. Then there's also, uh, twenty five thousand in adjustments, bottom line, transferred from uh, the sidewalk reserve.
Okay, yeah, down at the bottom, transfers.
Right. So I, so.
Let's see here.
Yeah, transfer from saving to.
I, I think Eli, um, ended. So we're showing on the top. The twenty five thousand dollars. Right, exactly. That, right, exactly. Twenty five thousand dollars then would come out of appropriations. Assuming that the appropriation is approved, um, by the public, because that would have to be written in as an article and warning. A thousand in parentheses at the bottom of that page, um, is, is a debit showing that it's going to then be used towards that project.
Doesn't that mean that's twenty five thousand less that we're going to be taking out in a loan?
Yes, that's, that's correct. I think that's what Abby's showing in there.
May I ask?
She's showing it as a transfer to savings.
Right, it's just certainly you're taking it out of one account and putting it in another.
Right.
But it's appropriated, it's not in an account.
Right, but that's true.
But, right, but we'd be taking it as cash, collecting it in the taxes and then transferring it.
To that.
Right, to savings. And then it would be spent that year. Either way, I think that's what we're, yeah, what we're seeing there.
I have one question about that twenty five thousand dollars that I would like to ask Kenny's loans. He's here, only just to satisfy my own curiosity and tripping factor, I guess. Um, literally. The twenty five thousand that we talked about on this page that is, um, Upper Church Street asphalt. Over time, is the asphalt sidewalk as good as the cement section sidewalk? Or does it have a tendency to heave in the frostsheaves of Ennisburg Falls, Vermont? And kind of throw Kevin right out of the cab of his tractor?
Yes, you are correct. Uh, the concrete is not going to last as long as the blacktop. And it's probably more forgiving, but it's going to be not as smooth.
It's going to be.
You said the concrete won't last as long as.
The concrete will last.
Because we have a few sections that are asphalt. They have been done in asphalt.
Yeah.
And therefore. Sorry.
Where, where?
Well, I have to go back out and walk to tell you that now. Yeah, St. Alden Street is one. Main Street after Pierre Laternos to the corner is all asphalt. Uh, and there's, there's enough, there's one that's like this. I can't remember which street. I will have to go back out and.
Cause I'm just curious, it's, it's like half the cost.
Yeah, I know, but I was just thinking, half the cost is wonderful, but if it doesn't hold up.
Right.
And you're, it's, you know, it would be like buying that truck. Yeah.
Well, that, that begs the question as to when those asphalt sidewalks were made. Cause we had some pretty terrible concrete sidewalks last year, and we still do. So, I mean, there, there's several sidewalks everywhere. Right, it, you know, I, I don't know when they were last done.
Another thirty year old sidewalks.
And is there any other benefits? Like if you had to do any, like underground work, it could remove a section of asphalt sidewalk versus concrete. Is there any pros and cons to?
No, you can cut either, either one, take it or nail it, but.
Feel like if it's concrete, you might be able to cut it back.
They never do though, I don't know why.
Sometimes you can. It is compassion. And then all of a sudden, when they feel that one is going to sell.
And then I also heard that you can salt asphalt with normal road salt as opposed to concrete safe salt. Is that true?
Yeah.
Are you currently, you don't salt sidewalks?
We don't salt sidewalks.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Dirt.
Right, so it doesn't matter.
Could we use smaller aggregate by any chance? And I only throw that question at you because some of the aggregates that have been used last year, and I haven't noticed much this year, are actually literally ankle turners. If you step on the rock that has been put on the sidewalk to, you know, keep you from falling down. Instead, you turn your ankle, fall down. I didn't know. Cause some of it's pretty good size. It's hard to, it's hard to screen it.
Yeah.
Very small.
And it's getting harder and harder to get sand. Even anywhere.
Could also be frozen homes and stuff.
It has to be pretty small to go through the wheel that we've got.
Uh, I wasn't here, of course, I, two weeks, I wasn't around. But, um, was anything appropriated for, um, Maple Park for redoing those streets? I didn't see anything. Okay.
That, that street's terrible. You're talking about the roadway.
The roadway. I mentioned that, I mentioned that a year ago in our budget, we didn't have the, you know, we, our budget was full. And, uh, I thought that we're going to bring it up again. And I know I wasn't around here. But, uh, I just wondered.
I don't think it was brought up at least recently. And so there's, there's nothing in here showing.
Okay.
Linking part, part, sorry, of, uh, Maple Park.
Maple Park.
Yeah, I think, did we have it on the budget last year? We ended up cutting it?
We talked about it.
Okay.
I think there's measurements and everything for that.
Is, do we have like a, like a data book of all of our roads? Cause every time you go for a quote, do you remeasure them?
No, no, there, it's all on.
Okay. Cause lately I've been finding myself wondering when the last time stuff was done. And it'd be really handy to have like a projects book you can just flip through, like this, this Cisco Street was done in blah, blah, blah.
It helps us to know how it's lasting.
It costs this much. You know, I mean, I, it would be nice to have all of that information that I want for some.
Some sort of spreadsheet.
Something. I mean, it's not hard to do now. You put it all on a computer and you pull it up whenever you want. You can search for it instead of digging through manuals and stuff. I don't know if it'd be a good idea to start something like that. That way for future reference, you know?
I'm sure we can, I, you know, even to thirteen or until then we can figure out when we did it and.
I think that would be handy as far as budgeting future stuff. I don't know. Give us something to look back on, you know? It cost us much at this time.
People start complaining, you can say, well, we just paid that five years ago. It's all my stuff.
Did you want to have a quote for Maple Park?
I'd like to see it.
It's bad.
Well, here, when, when Highway Man tells us that.
I think it, yeah, we'll make a note of that. But again, this is.
What, what would you do? Would you just resurface it or would you?
You could, you could shimmy the overlay back.
Cause I was told that, uh, like in the spring, there's like pop holes. There's no more. Uh, the blacktop isn't there no more. It's pop holes.
Yeah. There's not a lot of heavy traffic on that.
No.
So.
Yeah, yeah. And it's actually, all the buildings are occupied except for the one that's on the corner there where you can see the sky through the roof.
Yeah.
Stargazing from your bedroom.
So, so you guys are asking to see an additional project in?
This, this is going to weigh back on what Matt was saying last year, again, with the, the rising cut. Cause though, we have this twelve point seven, yeah, twelve point eight percent increase this year. We're also going to have some same sort of increase next year. That was on that forecasted budget rate that he gave us last year. I don't think, I don't think you two were going to know that.
But we, I mean, I, I don't like to pay more taxes than anybody else does. But I also realized that I can't live in the community and have any kind of capital improvements without it costing me some money.
Right. And, and that's, that's kind of what I think has happened is I feel like twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, maybe as recently as ten, there was a lot of capital improvements done. And then there was a section of where maybe things were kind of more dormant. And it seemed like there was a lot of roads bad at the same time. And that, and that, that kind of goes back to my, like, capital sheet where I could see these kind of things and.
And be able.
It kind of staggers stuff out. That way it's not, because we got hit last, I think, three years. We had, we had at least two road projects per year we budgeted. And that's, uh, four hundred, three hundred thousand dollars a year. And it's hitting us hard now. And so I don't want to bunch our projects up, you know?
No, it'd be much better to be able to stagger them out.
Right.
Yeah, it, it goes back further than that even, Sam. And I think people, there's actually a terminology for it. It's called social amnesia. Um, in this country, people really tend to forget history. And, and I talked to some people, they can't even remember serious events that have happened in their state or their nation from even a month ago. I can tell you that when I came here in two thousand and four, the roads in this village were atrocious. Some of them were barely even drivable. I, I, I was astonished at the condition of Orchard Street. I was astonished at the condition of Dickinson Avenue, School Street, Pleasant Street. All of these streets were crumbling apart. You, you couldn't, you could barely even drive on. The potholes were so bad. So, you know, and that happened from many, many years of.
Yeah, it didn't happen all right.
No, that happened from many, many years of, uh, just sort of kicking the can down the road.
Next year.
Right. It's not like people didn't see these things happening. They just didn't want to bite the bullet at the time. And, you know, take on the expenses to maintain the infrastructure. And it takes a long time to recover from periods like that. So over the last, you know, fifteen years or so, we have been trying to play catch up on transportation projects that should have happened, you know, many, many years prior to that. And that's how we've gotten into this situation.
Are we going to get any infrastructure help? Build Back Better or?
You mean like from ARPA funds?
Where, you know, the last fight that's in Washington at the moment?
Yeah. Well, that, that we don't know about. Built Back Better, that's a separate program. I don't even know if that's going to make it to Congress right now.
Possible.
It's possible.
We might get something from that.
Yeah. Um, and, you know, the thing though with the ARPA funds is that there is money in there for road projects, but the, the, the catch is, at least in what we've been able to see in the ARPA pots of money that have been released so far, they have to be new roads. They can't be existing roads. They have to be new roads that are being built for the first time. So.
Guess we have to add on to the village.
Yeah, so, you know, it doesn't help us with, you know, things like Maple Park.
No, it doesn't.
You know, roads that are already existing here. But who's, who's to say, you know, there is still more money out of the ARPA program that is supposed to be rolled out by the state through twenty twenty two. Um, they haven't finished doing that. There's, there's actually quite a number of pots of money that the state is supposed to be rolling out through the following, you know, twelve months or so. So it's possible, maybe one of these pots of money will allow for, you know, the re, reconstructing rather than building brand new.
And maybe somebody will see the.
Roads and.
Sense that that might make.
Right. And if that, that does become available, then I, I think it would be who the village to take advantage of.
Build Back Better just sounds better than build new better.
It does, doesn't it?
Those back are existing, but not doing this thing though. But, uh, yeah, let's, let's, let's get that in there.
So, number for, for Maple Park, okay?
Cause there's no other road projects this year.
No, you didn't have a road project in here. The transportation related projects are really more sidewalk projects.
Again, let's apply catch up on, on those too. The other question I have is equipment replacement appropriation. I thought we were going to throw fifteen thousand per year, if I remember correctly. And it shows nothing on twenty twenty one or twenty twenty actual. Isn't, wasn't there?
I thought that we were going to do a ten bell.
Something like that, yeah.
But we never did because of the extent of what this is.
Okay, maybe, maybe it'll work out then. Yeah, I mean, remember you're looking at a twelve percent increase right now.
Yeah.
As this is being shown. And there's another thing that, uh, well, actually there's two other things that Kenny and I wanted to at least bring up to you guys before we concluded discussions on general fund. Um, one is uh, kind of similar type discussion to one we just had with the electric department over the digger truck. This one concerns public works in, in a new plow truck. So, um, we are estimating, um, some costs on, uh, a new plow truck. It's what we're being told though on this is kind of similar to, you know, the, the issue with um, what we would have for a lead time on the, uh, digger truck in the electric department. That is being a two year lead. So you wouldn't see anything in the twenty twenty two and most likely twenty twenty three budget regarding this. But, um, I'm wondering if the board would be willing to see its way to looking at getting the order in for a new, uh, plow truck for the public works department. So you guys can mull that over again. You don't have to make a decision tonight about that. But that's a big ticket item that, you know, we'd like to throw out there to you guys and, and, uh, you know, see what, see what your thoughts are about that.
They warranted the.
They wanted to ask you to know that.
They weren't even over till November of one, twenty twenty one.
And a two year lead time, don't they have some sitting lockdown effects?
Uh, parks and general boys both.
They have assembled.
Do have some trucks. It may not be exactly, we have to sit down and roll the spec and, uh, year ratios and different stuff like that. They said they've got a lot coming in in July of this year. And they'd be ready by the end of the year.
So you, you could, you could go down and just buy one. It wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily have to do a special order.
You, if, if the specs were within, yeah. Uh, also the body companies are saying ten months' outbreak. So yes, you might be able to get chassis, but the body. So yes, you might be able to get chassis, but the body is gonna take ten months to get on. Uh, there's only one company left in the state of Vermont, uh, which is Viking, Williston, um, that puts on plow equipment. The others have moved in the near future.
Tenco's at Morrison?
No, Tenco was, um, very.
Remember they're gone?
And they're, they've gone. Uh, Morrisville was, um, HP Fairfield, which we got the five fifty there. And, um, they moved.
I thought, I thought that Clarks did have assembled new with a body and plow trucks down there.
They may have some, but it may not be the spec. They spec some for the, the interstate, uh, state specs and.
Like cans and stuff.
And they've got a lot of cans. And chances are, they may, at, at the odd, they could have one, but they couldn't guarantee me they'd have one, but we'd have to go with specs in order to, to get that going.
And the reason why we're looking at replacing the that plow truck is just because of what happened last year?
Uh, no, we're starting to get some rust on stuff, on the frame and stuff like that. But also, like you mentioned, capital budget, capital plan that we've been planning on. Um, the truck is seven years. So do we start now of starting to looking into replacing that truck? You know, within the, within the next year or two, you know, it does not need to, she just come in there or, but we should start planning.
Yeah, eight years is about the expiration date on that.
And a lot of them are now, they're buying the extended warranty plan with the trucks, like seven years. And yes, it is about seven thousand dollars more, what I'm understanding.
Well, we ate a twenty thousand dollar bill last year because of, we probably extended.
That's, that's right. So that's something to.
Yeah. And so again, you don't have to make a decision on it tonight. But we wanted to throw that out there to you guys at least for discussion purposes and see what your thoughts were. Realizing again that, you know, we naturally have the truck and make payments on it for probably another two years, but um, you know, we'd have to put the order in now in order to meet that two-year waiting period.
Well, what if, what if we do a budget in order, expecting it to be two years, which is theoretical, if it does come in in July or whatever? Then that's gonna hit our budget, not two years, but this year, right?
From July off. Oh, yeah. I mean, it. You're, like, some, some miracle happened and they come in and say.
Whenever it comes in.
We got one now. Uh, yeah, you, you're right. Um, I mean, we have to accept delivery whenever it came to us, you know, as long as it's not on the specs and everything. Um, but the, right now, they're telling us eighteen to twenty-four months on a plow truck. So like they're telling us with the digger truck too, so.
You got ballpark number?
Um, yes. Just a rough estimate is the chassis is ninety-nine thousand on a single axle. And the bodies are running about eighty thousand.
For international?
This I've got from Pre-Liner. International did not give back to me on.
Have you priced Western Star as well?
I haven't great, British Western Star. Uh, the body, that, that's the sander, the dump, the plow, the wings, all set up for that eighty thousand. So we're looking at nine hundred and.
Seventy-nine.
Yeah. That's without any trade. I, I did check in during trade. Now, the hours is running good. I mean, there's, but that motor is.
Yeah, that, that's a tough one too, because they're right on the edge of when they started to get good. So it's either that was a fluke or we got a lemon. There's what, thirty thousand miles on it now, probably?
Twenty-nine.
It happened when there's twenty-four.
Yeah.
I mean, it run, I don't know. I've, I've seen him, I've seen him on touch running good, hundred fifty, two hundred thousand miles on a problem. But then we had this twenty-four thousand mile bomb. So I, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's worth gambling or not, but, uh, gotta get our streets blown. What if we wanted like an HX series? You need something that big?
We've been playing around with that too.
You've seen those, must be?
Yeah.
Cause you got what, six yard dump on there?
Seven, seven yards, yeah.
Low shoulders.
Yeah.
So I mean, you probably could get away with something smaller. Like, have you seen, have you seen this five fifty of the wing?
Yeah, yeah.
Would something like that work?
I, I don't know if it would. You suppose the front ends and that would hold up?
Yeah.
If you're talking here, you, you had that truck how long and you got thirty, thirty thousand miles on it?
Right, I was saying, it doesn't really go fast.
Right.
Or far, or far.
Right.
So.
Do, uh, do we haul in our own gravel? Your sand?
Yeah.
So it.
From leeches, right?
Right, when it would increase the number of trips it would take.
Right.
Well, no, those HXs have seven, six, seven.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause you got a short little bit on that.
I was thinking it was like a, a four yard.
Uh, no, I was, I was looking, they're twenty-six thousand GBWs on like a pickup sized frame. They're pretty rugged little trucks, so. Um, but yeah, you're even, if, if you could get away with something smaller, but yeah, more trips would be a lot.
Right.
A mile up the road.
Just one of those things.
Even, even if you go to Wright's and get some sand up there.
Yeah. We go, uh, we go to Wright's to get the stand, uh, usually about thirty loads of, of the seven yard, you know? I mean, and if worse comes to worse, we can always hire Wright's to truck it here too. I mean, we've done that in the past, so. I mean, that's also an option, or it doesn't have to be Wright's.
Right, right. With that big walking floor, they got one load equals ten a year. Yeah, that, that actually may be feasible, just, you know, time and fuel.
Yeah. Um, I don't know what price difference would be in that compared to a single axle.
Right.
I don't.
Or turnaround time.
Right. Those weak trucks are.
So you can check it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be something to consider, looking into going a little smaller. I know what the Fords are going out with the Super Duty five fifty, six fifty, seven fifties again. Not, I'm not saying that's the way you should go there, kind of. I guess untested at this time, but like the little, the five fifties, the HXs.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chevy's all done making them, right?
Should be stuck with international somehow.
HX or the HBs are there.
Yeah, they're putting their transmission and their motor in the international Chevy is.
Yeah.
Chevy and Ford collabed on that last ten-speed transmission or something.
That Chevy never can use.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that'd be something, if, if you think you can get away with a truck that size, I, I mean, I, I'm not the one found the roads, but you know, thirty thousand miles in seven years.
Right. You know, I, I've even thought, um, since we've got this all angle plow on the five fifty, it makes a big difference. It is plowing, helping, helping out with the streets. I mean, Ford, you could just do certain spots with the V plow and with this all angle plow, it's, it makes a big difference.
And it's under C E L. So anyone can, often if need be.
Yep.
I mean, it'd almost be nice if I had with the wing on that one.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen them. They, they make them now, so. I don't know how well they work, maybe.
Right.
I could ask Avery.
There is. We did get a recall on the five fifty. It's gotta go in for a, a frame check. Uh, they're cracking behind the cap.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Internet.
That does a GM thing.
But they said it's, it's a pretty easy fix because we've got a dump body on there. They can just pick the dump up and put a channel top and bottom to repair it.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to be like Toyota.
Right.
They're changing frames.
That's something that's gonna have to happen in spring, so.
Okay.
But that's not what this.
Last truck breaks in half, one more sprint.
Uh, right.
He didn't read it.
Uh, but.
Yes, I, 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 it's not off the table, budgeting something for next year. Um, I don't know if you want to get some quotes together. I think we're gonna need at least three, right?
Yeah, it would be bad if we could get that in.
Just, yeah, I, for now, I guess maybe. Yeah.
So I'm hearing, at least for consideration, you guys are willing to look into that more for twenty twenty-two's budget and see where we end up at the end of the process. So Kenny, if you can get a couple more quotes and we'll bring that issue back to the board again. And, you know, it, as I said, it wouldn't actually reflect in this year's tax rate because we don't expect we wouldn't get it for another two years down the road, but, um, you know, but we need permission to order it. And so the public vote would have to take place on it in order for us to, to actually put the order in.
Yeah, at least for consideration. I don't wanna run it up too much, but I also don't want to catch up and.
Right. And if you have all these things purling in the back of your head, you can think about it.
Yeah.
Right, Kenny, so get a couple more quotes on that and, um, when you're ready, we'll bring it back to the board at, at another meeting for them to talk about that, whether, whether we'll consider that for part of the warning for twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And then there was another issue too that, um, wanted to bring up, and this really is sort of, uh, conceptual at this point, but we wanna have a discussion with you guys about this topic. And we fully realize this won't happen this year, but maybe for next year, you can think about it. And that is Ken and Gary have come to me over the last few months and um, expressed concern about the workload that has been increasing over the past ten years or so on the staff for the public works department. And both Kenny and Gary feel like they're at a point now where they're really struggling with the, the number of staff people that we have in the department to keep up with the workload and the expectations that, you know, year after year have just grown and grown and grown on the department. And so we may be at a point, if this is what the expectation level is gonna be in the community for the department, where you may need to consider hiring another person to come in and work for the public works department. We, there were several things this year that we almost didn't get done. Um, we did end up getting them done, but, um, they were struggling pretty hard to meet the deadlines as, you know, winter was looming. And we're expecting that these jobs were gonna be finished before snow fell. So Ken, I don't know if you wanna add anything more or talk to the board or give examples about things, but that was something that, um, was asked that we at least bring up with you guys. Realizing, you know, given what we're looking at right now in the general fund, that, that's not gonna happen this year in twenty twenty-two, but it'd be a good thing for you guys to think about and, and remember as we go through the year, because it's been happening every year for a long time, where, you know, we start getting into the year and then all these special requests start coming out of, now you want this done by public works and now you want this done. You know, we've, we've done a lot of additional work over the last ten years or so in the department and I'm hearing from them that they're feeling like, you know, where they're, they're kind of at a point where they don't know if they can get the workload done consistently every year. So just some things to think about. And was, was there anything more you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no, I just, um, I'm thinking that if we could add a person that would be able to drive the big truck, operate equipment. Um, Kevin's position is limited. He's a labor, uh, person and he cannot operate or drive trucks. So Rick or I'm down on your foot a lot.
He can drive the ton truck, Kenny?
He can drive the ton truck.
So if we did downsize Big Truck, he could drive that truck.
Yeah, but there's still sidewalks and stuff.
Oh, no, absolutely. How long has it been since you've had anybody? I mean, since you, how long has it been that you, with the core that you've got right now? Let's see, guys, there forever.
Decades.
As long as I've been there.
Okay.
Uh, since.
And we've, and, and as village, we've grown. I mean, not just geographically and physically, but we've grown and I'm sure we have put a much larger demand on the public works department.
Yeah, I can tell you, I mean, in my time here, I, I've seen it. I mean, the work these guys are doing now compared to two thousand and four, when I first started here, that these guys are doing way more, way more.
But with no more vice.
Right, with no more personnel, no more equipment. They've taken on, you know, quite a bit more work during the course of the year. And, you know, that's a credit to them and a credit to the department.
Which we appreciate.
And a good value to the community. But they're getting to the point where they're feeling like they can't really take on anything more and be consistent in the work that they're putting out there. Sort of from an economic model, you would consider the, the terminology would be the point of diminishing returns where, you know, you're, you're, you've taken on so many other things, you're no longer doing well, the core services that your department or your service, whatever it is, is responsible for giving the public. And I think that's what I'm hearing from Ken and Gary is they, they feel like they're getting to that tipping point. Where at the, they're at the point of diminishing returns.
I guess where I was going with downsizing the truck more wasn't that Kevin could drive it, it would, if you hire somebody, it broadens your hairable. Makes the pull a little bigger.
There you go, yeah. You are looking for C D L drivers right now.
Right.
It's, it's. That's gonna be a tough.
Yeah, smaller trucks, then you can hire a larger number of people are available for the job.
And this is year round, not just seasonal?
Right. Right.
Cause in the, in the past, you picked up usually something in summer, right?
Usually we had somebody to help cut the lawns and, and trim and stuff like that, you know? Um, that's getting harder. Nobody wants to come in and do that kind of work. You have to also be eighteen years old or older to operate push mower or weed blocker. So that's a harder situation. Uh, somebody eighteen years old doesn't wanna push a, push mower or a trimmer.
Why, why is it eighteen just for insurance and my?
You're right.
Child labor laws and all those good things.
Yeah. That'd be a perfect summer time job for high school kid.
True. Yeah, and, I mean, but when I was that age, I mean, that's what you did. You went, you went out and hired a few high school kids or.
Fifteen, fifteen years old.
Right, yeah. And drivers that go to town, but you can't do that anymore.
Hmm. Okay. One's now to consider.
Yeah, cause, you know, they come back up again next year. Um, I'm sure Ken and Gary will, you know, if they feel like they're, they're getting in trouble and then over their head and they need some, you know, immediate help, but um, in my conversations with them, it sounds like, you know, they, they understand that's not gonna happen this year in twenty twenty-two, but they're trying to, I think, warm you up to the possibility of maybe next year, twenty twenty-three, this might be considered in the budget.
Right. How would that work? Would we need the budget funds there before we make a hire?
Yeah, you'd wanna prove, I, I think if you're gonna hire someone permanently in full time, you wanna make sure you're, you're gonna have the money to pay them. So I think you would want to fold that into a, uh, into a budget that you propose to, to the public for whatever the, the year that you're, you know, you're taking it to the public for a vote on is. And then you, then you're assured, okay, we've got this money. This is part of what we're gonna be able to collect on in the taxes.
Right? Cause even if we make a higher out of unrestricted funds, like say we hire in November, use unrestricted funds, so budget season. And then if the voters for some reason don't approve of that line, then, then you're stuck, but you're in a bad situation.
It's always the person you hired.
Yeah, that's, that's not good B R.
Yeah. Okay. But yeah, if, if you wanted to hire somebody for next plow season, we would need to have that budgeted next year. Yeah, for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. But, I mean, that's not only just the, the plowing.
Do you, do you plan on getting somebody seasonal for the summer?
I don't think we really.
We didn't budget for it.
We didn't budget for it.
Cause they haven't been able to find anyone in the last two, three years to, I think. At least, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but. The feedback I was hearing from you guys was you've sort of given up on that as an option, and so we didn't budget anything.
We even put it out to the school. And. Offered, you know, if anybody's interested, and we never, we didn't get a single person. It's just.
Okay.
You might be better off looking for a sixty-year-old.
Could we? Just trying to think out of the box. Uh, could we budget for a. A six-month position as in starting in the middle of the fiscal year? So that it's not as huge of a hit, but we have the services or the extra support for the summertime and into the plowing season?
That, that, I guess that kind of goes back to. I think what I was thinking before is we would need, we would need a full-time salary position budgeted before we make a full-time salary or hourly hire. Um, because if we only budget for for six months. And that gets approved, but a year doesn't, then we're, you know, we're in a pitfall because we hired this person for a full-time position, but.
Right, no, I mean, that the position is full-time and permanent, but starts mid fiscal year. So we wouldn't be looking to hire somebody right away, just so it's not as as big of a hit this year. I don't know if that's helpful. I don't know if it makes sense.
I get you, um.
Like from June. December of this year, and then.
And then the voters cannot, can think about it now and see if it passes.
Right. I ha- I I don't, I guess I don't understand how that would work though, would the voters wouldn't be approving the full-time position, they'd be approving the money for the position, correct? Right, if, and you could, and you could do that for next year too, if you wanted to. Um, I I kinda get what you're saying, Heather, to. Soften the blow a little bit to the rate increase and sort of spread it out over two years rather than one. Um, and you could do it that way too. You know, as long as you were upfront with everybody and, you know, explained that. This is intended to be a permanent, full-time position, but we're gonna start it at June or July, whenever the board decided. And um, you know, you, so you're only gonna feel half of the impact this year, but then. Next year, you're gonna feel the whole thing. I mean, you can do that, and I mean, if you wanna do it this year, you could consider, if you wanted to do that in twenty twenty-three, you could do it that way too. E- either way, I mean, that's another way of skinning the cat.
I don't think it would be a bad idea to try to do what she said and put in like a half year.
Right, and even if that half year. Somehow turns into a seasonal worker, a summertime worker for this year. I don't know if that would be an issue either. Right? Cause the money's there, we could, we could pay the worker, was it?
Right, if 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 we budget. Rough numbers, thirty thousand dollars for a person for six months.
Right.
Doesn't really matter. Where you spend thirty thousand, if it's a seasonal, summertime person, or if it's somebody full-time.
Well, I think you've wanna, I mean, the intent is to give somebody full-time.
Oh, absolutely, I think we would prefer to do that, but. Just so happened that, well, we couldn't find anybody that would wanna do full-time, but hey, we just so happens to find this guy that wants to work all summer.
Right, yeah, yeah.
At least we'd still have the money we could spend on that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a ended up going that way, yeah.
Hypothetically.
You mean like people at the golf course?
Right.
They went to the summer months and.
No.
No.
I I I get what you're saying. Budget for the full-time position is if we don't find, we get a summertime, and so we'll have the funds there.
Right, at least the money's there.
I I also don't think that's a bad idea. How much did you, do you remember how much you used to budget before for seasonal now?
It was just a seasonal bowl, it was, they didn't have any benefits.
Right.
Didn't have to join the union.
Right, so that, that's a big difference between hiring someone seasonal. That's temporary, and that's because they're just gonna be there for a few months and that's it. Versus hiring someone that's intended to be permanent, full-time. That's a union position, you've gotta roll in all the benefits that come with that as well. It it's a, that's a big price difference.
But it may be the only way you'll get anybody. Is with the one that's the big price difference, as opposed to somebody that wants to work. Seasonally and. You know, pay's not gonna be that great, they know they're not gonna get any benefits at all, they're still gonna have to work hard. Finding somebody that, you know, maybe at least knows they're gonna have to work hard, but the benefits are gonna come along with it, might be a little. Easier to do.
More incentive.
Yeah.
All right, when is our fiscal year in? Is it October? It's, no, it's a calendar year, so we run from January one to December thirty-one. Okay. Our our fiscal year is the calendar year. So I. I think you're right, we wouldn't. Unless you get him over the summer, I don't think we'd need to budget this in twenty twenty-two. Cause they could start January first, twenty twenty-three, next possible.
And most of our work starts in June anyway. You know, from June all of them, right?
Do you wanna put in somebody for half a year, full-time position, start in June of twenty twenty-two, or do you wanna wait till January twenty-three?
That's. Yeah, it would be, it would be nice to.
Okay.
It's it's gonna be another.
We have approved all of it at right side.
This is just a.
Well, we have a small Public Works Department that is working very hard and. We need them. We can't, we also can't work them to death and then have nothing.
Speak for yourself.
Kenny and I go back for.
Okay, I guess for right now. If, we'd like to see um, like half a year, sat six months that uh. Normal pay budgeted, I guess, for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Just for consideration. Yeah, half year. Permanent, full-time. Even if it's budgeted and we don't use it, that's not the end of the world. Okay, so that, we'll show that in there as well then.
Field of trees, some more paper.
Yeah, uh. So I just wanna make sure I'm capturing the the changes, so there's. There's three things in the general fund they're asking. To be added, although one of them won't, won't show in twenty twenty-two track. Yeah, right, so those are the cost for a new plow truck. But that probably won't hit the budget for two more years. But you'll have to vote on it um, by Australian ballot. Cause that'll be financed within five years, I imagine. Given the cost. You do, if you wanna do it for five years, then you could do it. Um, you vote from the floor on it. But if we're gonna finance that within five. Goes to Australian ballot vote.
We could go seven on that, we could be sent orange.
So then Australian ballot vote on that, but not hitting the tax rate. Then you wanna see a quote for um, shim and overlay on Maple Park. And then add six months of a new permanent, full-time position labor. For Public Works. Okay, um, we'll work on that. And as soon as we get that ready and, you know, folded into the tax rate, we'll. Bring that back to the board so you guys can see all that together and see what it looks like. So we're looking at a twelve point seven nine percent increase now, so we understand that's, all those things are only gonna add.
They're not free.
Yeah. Was there anything else under general fund then? Anything else is looking in good shape?
We are finding. Tractors starting to get hurt to come by for John Deere tractor. Um, they're not making a, there's a valve on the back for hydraulic. They're not making that anymore, so I've asked them to, I need some other.
Going to harness?
Yeah.
Did they just get bought out?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can hear.
How are they to deal with?
Prices are thirty to forty percent higher, same stuff.
Wow, awesome.
Because they have the market corner. You're not buying a John Deere or anybody other than them. Chamberlain Valley just got bought out too.
By who?
Another big.
And then all the international leaders are gone to Legions now.
Yeah.
You gotta handle on that.
Electric over hydraulic, so. Or there isn't a going that way now, I don't. It just feeds our standard. Kind of our everything on the back end. Uh, it even feeds the deck, so.
We can do, we'll get some specs out of John Deere.
Um, I know the problem. But I can't find, I can't find the valve, and I cannot get the old ring, it goes on the valve. Fix it, I put old rings on it, and it works okay for a while, it doesn't solve the problem. John Deere is because they can't, they can't get parts. And so I took it apart, and I know exactly what is wrong, but I can't, I can't get parts.
Anything works twice for like.
I can tell you're itching to fix it, there's no doubt about that.
It's already broke, what the heck, you're not even sure they're behind.
All right. Did I wrap up budgets for tonight? I guess we'll move on to other business. Other business, all right. Um, I will hear a motion to enter into executive session for personnel.
I move in for executive session.
Did you lose Heather?
No.
Oh, it froze.
Did you say aye Heather?
Aye.
All right, let's close now.